Get through the rough stuff. Is everybody good? We're gonna do all this extra stuff until Steve gets back. Good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. My name is Maura Hurley. I'm the Deputy Mayor and I'm taking over for the Mayor this evening. This meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to 1 MRSA Section 403-B2D and Section 6 of the Sanford City Council Rules and Procedure. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing 1-929-205-6099 using meeting ID 853-2310-5679 and password 325305, or via computer at the website, at the link provided on our website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the Sanford, City of Sanford website at www.sanfordmaine.org under Government, City Council, Contact the Council. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unreg, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now have a moment of silence. Roll call, Counselor Stackpole.
Present.
Counselor Trish Montague.
Present.
Counselor Hitchcock.
Present.
Counselor Martel.
Present.
We are also joined this evening by the City Manager and his assistant, Larissa Ricketts. Just to let you know, both Counselor Hanselman and the Mayor Becky Brink are absent with notice. The minutes of the 25-49-01, order to approve the minutes from the regular City Council meeting held on January 21st, 2025, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? 25-50-01, order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the Sanford City Council held on January 21st, 2025, could I have a motion, please? Counselor Transporting?
Yeah, I have motion.
And a second, please. Counselor Martel? Thank you. All those in favor? Do we have a Mayor's Report this evening?
Manager's report?
Oh, I don't have a Mayor's Report.
You guys don't want to call Becky real quick, the Mayor's Report?
I don't think she would appreciate that, but we could. Let her know we're, we're fine without her, right? Okay, City Manager's Report, Steve.
Thank you. So I'll be as brief as possible. So in your packet, I put, excuse me, for the report that I sent out to you earlier, I have testimony in there for LD 185, which is an act to expand opportunities to invest in municipal tax increment financing revenues. So tomorrow afternoon, three city officials will be providing testimony in support of LD 185, which seeks to amend current law in Title 38, Chapter 206, to recognize public safety facilities as essential to economic development and allow for tax increment financing revenues to be applied to the renovation and construction of these essential facilities, the same as all other supporting infrastructure. So I put a copy of the testimony that I've written in there, it's copied first in the backside of your packet. I will target the current law and why parallels support the amendments as requested. The city's fire chief will also testify. I've attached his testimony in there on why and how TIF can be used as a tool to provide for the necessary public safety facilities that supports the city's economic development and resulting need due to our expansion. He'll also touch base on the OSHA regs that are forcing this statewide and the issues there. And then thirdly, the city's economic development director Keith McBride will be there as well, and he will further elaborate, and I've attached his testimony in here as well, on what businesses want and expect when making investments in our city and how these facilities support that economic development. We also anticipate, we've been told from state representatives, that DECD, the Department of Economic and Community Development, is going to appear and testify against LD 185. So I'm very curious as to see what their stance is as to why, and again, this is assumption, as to why they view that general economic development in our state is not supported by public safety infrastructure. It's going to be, that's what I'm curious to find out. So we know that the testimony, if there's a senator there, that person will speak first. Next will be the representatives. Thirdly will be the departments such as DECD. So we'll be speaking after DECD does, so I can address that further if need be. Yep. Yep. The next thing I'll bring to your attention is the hypodermic apparatus exchange programs. So as a city, you enacted an emergency ordinance limiting hypodermic exchange programs operating in Sanford to be limited to a one-to-one exchange of syringes. That ordinance will lapse on February 24th of this year, which is the 91-day period for the emergency ordinance. We have it scheduled. The City Council will hold a public hearing on February 18th, so at your next council meeting, to consider the permanent enactment of the ordinance, retaining the one-to-one exchange. Further, there's been a bill, LD 219, titled "An Act to Limit Hypodermic Apparatus Exchange Programs to a One-for-One Exchange," that is coming before the state legislature. The bill's now in print. We saw that, I saw that at the LPC meeting last Thursday. It is, the bill is sponsored by Representative Mastracchio Ann Fredericks of Sanford and Senator Harrington of York. And the bill makes a simple amendment, which the new lang, it eliminates the "may" and if it's emphasis, adds the word "shall," limit the number of hypodermic apparatus provided by a certified hypodermic apparatus exchange programs to participants, to one hypodermic apparatus per participant for each hypodermic apparatus exchanged by that participant. So it's the one-to-one. So that seeks to do the program back to a one-for-one. So I do note that that's how the program operated for nearly 30 years prior to the changes that came about during COVID. The last piece that I'll offer to you this evening is York County Community Action. They have increased what I call the workforce transportation. Starting on Monday today, yesterday, February 3rd, YCAC added more trips to their Southern Maine Connector Route, which travels between Sanford, Springville, Biddeford, and Saco. They have doubled the number of round trips per day and also expanded the service to earlier in the morning and later in the afternoon. That's in a specific response to those needing transportation for work-related elements. The expanded service is made possible by funding through the Portland Metropolitan Planning Organization, or PACS. And you can view the overall plan and the new transportation schedule. I put an attached, I put a link to that transportation schedule at the bottom of the page, so. And again, I emailed this out to you to become part of the public record. The three testimonies are attached to the backside as well, so. I would anticipate strong attendance to that hearing. I've also been giving testimony from a couple of other municipal managers, all in alignment for the same, one of which was submitted by the manager out of Thomaston, that spoke to their relationship with Kimbrough and how that their tax increment financing had supported the purchase of necessary firefighting apparatus and other equipment that was made necessary by that large cement plant being put there. And now they need to address their facilities and it can't be used for that, only the 15%. So there's, I believe we're gonna have a lot of other testimony coming in. Chief Susie's been very active with the Fire Chiefs Association. I believe there, a number of them are coming in as well.
You know, just to point out, as we all know, because we've done it as city councils, we focus on housing as a necessity for economic development, and new fire stations and public safety is critical to added housing as well. So I don't know if you can make that link somewhere in testimony, but.
I did.
You know, housing is a, housing is, good housing, availability of housing is economic development as well, and we can't continue on with some of our outdated public safety situations.
Let me touch base on my testimony just briefly. So I introduce myself. I talk about the specific law that's being referenced, and I'm seeking recognition for the need to renovate or construct public safety facilities related to general economic development. I continue to use, that's the terminology that's in the state law, should be a qualified cost within the development district programs. Currently, that's limited to 15%, not the 100%. I point out, the next element is the tax increment financing has been and continues to be an essential tool used by our service center community. I then go on to list that Sanford has used tax increment financing in support of the legislative findings in Section 5221 to expand roads and utilities into the historic Mill District and downtown redevelopment, construction of over 371 housing units and 249 pending, or 670 total housing units. I'm carrying with me all of that data as to what the types and numbers were specifically so if asked, because the intent of my testimony is always to stay within that three-minute limit that I anticipate they'll have to force them to ask me a question, to open the floor. So redevelopment of affordable housing lots and/or units, expansion of the airport infrastructure for taxiways, hangar lots and facilities, economic development initiatives and marketing, which results in the expansion of the industrial lots for major industries of statewide significance, expansion of the broadband for business via Sanford Net Fiber, trails improvements and expansions, and workforce development. So then I go on to talk about the results of these efforts and the expansions thereof and for employment opportunities, housing opportunities, improved infrastructure of roads and utilities, community developments, and the benefits of the use of the TIF for this development has been within Sanford, the surrounding region, and the state of Maine through the increased employment taxes, corporate taxes, increased sales taxes, and increased gross domestic product. So there are some legislators that always, "Well, this only benefits just you." No, no. The state benefits from this economic development far more than the city does as far as the taxation of the bricks and mortar facility. So I go ahead and point that out, and that this results, the results have been due to increased infrastructure necessary to attract, expand, and retain these economic development initiatives. Then I talk about the, with the expansion, the state law states that the facilities outlined in the development program adopted by the legislative body of the municipality. So we get to provide for all of this infrastructure as being qualified under tax increment financing, yet it does not recognize public safety infrastructure at the same level that it does all other elements such as trails and such. It's limited to the 15%. We're seeking that to be at 100. So due to our city's economic development efforts added to major industries, workforce housing, workforce development, and greatly improved infrastructure, our fire EMS service and their current facilities are no longer able to support the 7% year-over-year increase of run volumes now averaging in excess of 5,000 runs per year from their current facilities. Industry and developers demand adequate protection of their investments, as does our city with the related workforce and residents. Public safety facilities are essential to attracting, retaining, and protecting the general economic development stemming from the use of tax increment financing. It is equally as essential as our roads, utilities, transit improvements, recreational trails, economic development, arts district development, affordable housing options, childcare facilities, or facilities leased by state government, all of which can be financed 100% under TIF, but not public safety facilities. So recognizing the necessity of our public safety facilities as infrastructure is equally as essential, I go on to talk about that. I go on to talk about public safety facilities are regional and house the essential staff and equipment that protects our state and regional assets and fosters attraction and assistance and retention of our state's economic infrastructure and our employers and their employees. So the last statement in here is, as current law states, it is declared that the actions required to assist the implementation of development programs are a public purpose and that execution and financing of these programs are a public purpose. That's why I just simply ask thereafter to include public safety facilities as part of that general economic development for public purposes. So I know that they will ask questions about that, and I'll be able to talk with them about that and hopefully be able to respond as to why DECD is speaking in opposition to this. So this is critical for us for financing our two fire stations that we're under construction of in the near future.
Any questions for Steve? From his report? Yes, Jonathan?
Steve, thank you. I appreciate you putting this together. Sometimes they only give you two minutes, so make sure you have maybe a condensed version you can.
It will be three.
Speak to when you're up there. But thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Well, there are only staff members in the audience, so I don't think there are any public participations unless there's someone online who's watching this evening. If so, just raise your hand. Okay, seeing none. Public hearings, there are none. Consent agenda, there's none. Old Business, 25-33-01, order to adopt proposed amendments to Chapter 280 of the Sanford City Ordinances for a revision to Section 280-11-5 Residential Development Zone. This item must be read on two separate occasions. This is the second reading. Would you mind coming up, Jamie, and just kind of refreshing what we're voting on this evening?
Good evening, everybody. Jamie Cole, Director of Planning and Development. Yes, we brought this before you two weeks ago. It's a minor amendment to the RD District. Essentially, currently, the ordinance allows one single-family house to be constructed on existing lots of record without being required to connect to public sewer. This change is changing it to allow in two dwelling units to connect to a private subsurface wastewater septic system and not require it to connect to public sewer. We changed the wording around a little bit on another section that talks about expansions, but it says the same thing. We just clarified how it was written. That's the only changes proposed at this point.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Everybody remember this? Okay, so could I have a motion, please? Jonathan?
Motion to approve the ordinance change as read.
Thank you. Second, Pete?
I'll second that.
Any questions, concerns? All those in favor? Thank you, Jamie. Now we are getting into the meeting that's airport, airport, and all about the airport, because I think every agenda item is about the airport. So, did you know that, Allison, when you got here, that you were the only one up tonight?
I did, I saw that.
Okay, first one, 25-53-01, order to accept the resignation of Joseph Weeks from the Airport Advisory Committee. Could I have a motion? Pete?
Yeah, I have motion to accept the resignation of Joseph Weeks from the Airport Advisory Committee.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Nate, thank you. And I mean, I think there was a good reason.
Health.
Health reasons, okay. So we'll be looking for a replacement. I'm assuming you've already, okay, so we'll just, we'll probably approve it at the next meeting most likely.
Yep, I sent an application, so he knows to fill that back out, and then we could come back to the February 18th meeting.
Okay, so with regret, we'll vote to accept the resignation of Joseph Weeks from the Airport Advisory Committee. Could I have a vote? All those in favor? Thank you. 25-41-01, order to approve a contract with airport estimates to perform an audit fee estimate, independent, sorry, independent fee estimate for the contract for the airport planning study at Sanford, Seacoast Regional Airport in the amount of $2,300. Allison?
Very good. I'm Allison Avia. I'm the Airport Manager of our Sanford-Seacoast Regional Airport. I'm gonna give you just a high-level overview, and that will speak to the next three items of what they are and why we have to do them. So the federal government has this trust fund called the Airport Improvement Program. Whenever you buy a plane ticket and it has those little fees or passenger facility charges, it goes into that fund. Whenever the airlines buy fuel or anybody at the airport buys fuel, there's fuel tax that goes into that federal fund. So it's one of the only things in government that if you don't use it, you don't pay for it. So that, that trust fund takes care of all of the capital improvement projects for all of the airports in the United States, and they're, it's doled out in all these different ways. We get $150,000 a year in what's called entitlement funding. We're able to roll that over for four years up to $600,000. But just because they put that in a little section for us doesn't mean we just get it. You still have to apply for a grant. It has to be eligible and all the whole thing. And there's, just like our local procurement process, there's a really involved federal procurement process. So all the things that we're talking about today are part of that federal procurement process. So the first thing that needs to happen is I have a meeting every year with FAA and Maine DOT, and we talk about the CIP for grants for the next five years. So it should be programmed in that CIP. It has to be shown on the airport layout plan that's approved by the federal, state, and local government, so that'll be the last thing that we talk about, is that ultimate airport layout plan. And then you need to select a consultant firm through a request for qualifications process, so that has no costs associated with it. You set it up. It used to be for every six years, you could pick one, and they're your consulting firm for six years for all the projects. Now they make us do it for every single individual project. So for the airport master plan, we're doing that in two phases, so we had selected McFarland Johnson for both phases, so I don't need to do the RFQ for the first two of them. We already know it's McFarland Johnson. So that is checked off for this one, not for the next one that we'll talk about with the perimeter road. So for the master plan, we know it's MJ, but then we need to do an independent fee estimate based on the scope of work and a blank spreadsheet that they give us. We hire this independent fee estimator, which is this item, that's that contract, and they use that scope and they fill out what they think the project should cost the consultant to do for engineering, planning, consulting, project administration, all that stuff. And then we're required to negotiate the contract with MJ to within 10% of what that estimate is. So it gives you kind of the chutzpah that you need to sit down with them and say, it has to be within 10% of this. So I need to maintain all that paperwork for all that stuff, so that then, once we agree, then I bring the contract back for Steve to sign that gets approved through this. So we don't know what that number is. That's why the next item, it's just within 10% of the IFE. So that gives it accountability there, and we know that it's going to be fair. Then, once they're under contract, then if there was a bidding component, we would have to go out to bid for the construction, and then we know between the consulting firm, the independent fee estimate cost, and whatever the bid comes in at, that's the number we apply for, for the grant. So then we apply for the grant. That's when they send a grant offer. That's when it comes back before you again, and that's when Steve has to sign the big fat stack of papers. The city attorney has to attest to it and look through and make sure that everything's good, and that's when they're saying, here's your money. And then we can start drawing down on a reimbursable basis from that grant. So that's the whole procurement process you have to go through every time to get all that stuff. So these first two, this one that we're on right now, this is the independent fee estimate for the master plan process, Phase Two, which is gonna look at, the first one that we did was more of the fun one. It's looking at the hangars, and that's what we're gonna talk about tonight. This one is more of the technical airfield geometry, looking at the approach spaces, all of that type of stuff. So that's what this project is.
Everybody got that? Okay. So that's, you said that's the next three?
Yep.
The two, okay. So could I have a motion for 25-41-01?
Motion to approve.
Could I have a second? John?
I'll second.
I'll ask one more time. Are there any questions on this one? No? All those in favor? 25-42-01, order to approve the contract with McFarland Johnson to perform an airport planning study in the amount to be negotiated within 10% of the independent fee estimate as required and to be signed upon receipt of FAA grant offer. Do I have a motion? Jonathan?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions on this one? She explained this one pretty much already, too. Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. 25-43-01, order to approve a contract with Aviast Engineering to perform an independent fee estimate for the contract to design permit, sorry, the reconstruction of Seacoast Taxi Lane 1 and build a runway 14 perimeter road at the Sanford-Seacoast Regional Airport in the amount of $2,400. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Nate, have a second? John?
Second.
And do we have questions on this one? Did you guys know where, did you see the backup where this road is?
So one thing I would want to mention on this one, the reason that you're not gonna see the subsequent contract approval is because I'm in that RFQ process to select the consultant. So I didn't want it to be double ambiguous of some consultant and some number that you guys were approving, so I'll know by the 18th, and that one.
It'll be the 10%.
I'll remind you, we'll tie to this, so we'll know who that consulting firm is at that point.
Okay, so all those in favor? Thank you. Okay, so now we're onto different stuff. The last one's gonna be the fun one, because she's gonna show us the master plan, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. 25-54-01, order to adopt a resolution in support of LD 138 Act to exempt airports from certain state endangered and threatened species habitat protections for the safety of the airport users, the public, and wildlife in Maine. Okay.
Okay, so Sanford is very active in Augusta this year. So this bill was put in by Senator Bennett. I helped him draft up the language for it. Representative Mastracchio and Fredericks both co-signed it. There's a couple other cosponsors on it, so it's got bipartisan support. It's really just a common sense measure, so airports and wildlife don't mix. As everybody can just, you don't need a degree to understand that. So what, what we're, what we have is which master do you follow, kind of situation, where FAA is telling us, we've spent all this money on a wildlife hazard assessment, we have a wildlife hazard management plan, we have a federal depredation permit for migratory birds, we have a state depredation permit for all the things you'd normally need, a hunting license to be able to shoot, and if it becomes an emergency or something where we can't harass them off the airport, then that's the legal methods that we take to take care of that. At the same time, we're required to do all of that, we're required to mow the grass between six and 10 inches tall, less than six inches, it increases the chances for loafing, feeding, think of like geese, mourning doves, stuff like that. Greater than 10 inches, now you have it going to seed. You're encouraging lepidoptera. I wish I didn't even know what that word means. There's bugs. So now there's bugs, there are seeds, there's more birds.
Moths.
And there's mice.
Moths.
There could be moths. So now you have a whole habitat that you've created. It gives cover for predators, it increases hawk activity and other kind of raptors, and the deer like to go bed down in it. So we're required by our wildlife hazard management plan to keep the grass between six and 10 inches. But then the state tells us that there's a certain type of bird over here, you're not allowed to touch that from May until August 15th, and the grass is so high that when I walk through it, I have to go like this, because it's like up to my shoulders. So what happened back in 2017 was, before we had the fence, there, it had been years of having the grass like that in the infield. So you have that nice triangle orientation that a naval airstrip usually has, and the deer learned this is like a safe zone, because there's no hunters in there, there's, you know, nothing going on in there to bother them. So at dawn and dusk, they're crossing active runways, when you can least see them, and we had two deer strikes. The second one, the fire department had to come. Luckily, nobody got hurt miraculously. They were both small aircraft that were going slow at the time of the impact, but it was quite a mess. We had to call the fire department to hose off the runway, and about 10 minutes after we were done, a former president landed in his jet. So if that small plane hadn't hit it, it would not be the relatively unknown story that it is right now. So at that point, it was really unfortunate, especially, I'm all for conservation, if it makes sense and makes common sense, but we had to kill about two dozen deer, because it was just, they had learned, and that's where they were going back and forth, so we had to exercise our depredation permit. There was no other way to keep them out. Luckily, now, we were able to get the funding for the solar, for the fence, but they still jumped the fence, and then once they get in, when you're fenced in, it's really hard to get them out unless you're inspecting constantly. A lot of smaller airports around the state don't have the personnel, they don't have a solar project to build them nine miles of fencing, so these problems persist elsewhere. And IFNW, over the last 16 years that I've been working with them, has just been getting progressively more onerous and less scientific with the methodology, so. At Sanford, the grasshopper sparrow mitigation was two-to-one, which they call modest. I would say one-to-one is modest, two-to-one is kind of punitive. And we recently did a project in Freiberg, and they wanted 16-to-one. Same species type of things going on, you know, same Maine Endangered Species Act. The other frustration I have is that the Maine Endangered Species Act is only across the border of Maine, so they're only rare here because it's naturally not their habitat. There's not a lot of grassland in Maine, except what we maintain is airports. So what we're requesting is that airports are excluded from the Maine Endangered Species Habitat Protections. We're not asking for a depredation permit against endangered species by any means. We're just asking that we're allowed to maintain the airport the way that our wildlife hazard management plan says, and keep the grass mowed, keep the trees off, off inside the fence, all of those types of things. So it's a common sense approach that we're looking for. We had a public hearing. DEP spoke against it, of course, IFNW spoke against it. DEP spoke against it, of course IFNW spoke against it. There is curiously, I guess, another exemption for single family lots that I didn't realize. So, which I find interesting. We did the calculation and we're asking for about 8,000 acres to be out of 23 million acres in Maine. So I'm not sure what single family house lots are, but I'm sure it's over a million acres probably if it's every type of lot. So we don't believe that it's unreasonable. One of the arguments that they made that I countered was that it could be a slippery slope. If we ask for an exemption, other people are going to want exemptions. But I argued that public use federally funded airports are really such a small particular niche that it would be really hard to meet that standard to ask for an exemption for something else. And it's a safety related issue. So why'd you exempt private house lots? What was the reasoning? Was that due to safety? So I'm not sure, you know, exactly how it's going to go. I think it has a good chance if it makes it out of committee. But we want to get all the support that we can. So we've got quite a few airports have testified in favor of it. A ton of pilots provided testimony. And so I'm asking for the city council to have a resolution in support of doing this, both for aviation safety and then also for our grant assurances to follow our wildlife hazard management plan.
Sanford one of the worst for wildlife?
There, yeah, there's quite a bit. Yep.
That's what I assumed.
Yeah, because we're the furthest south.
So if you go much further north, then these species naturally don't occur there.
Yeah. I know, I know we're a transition location for migratory stuff, so, yes.
So they've already had the public hearing on this, correct? So the Legislative Policy Committee met last Thursday. This is one of the printed bills that came before us. So they put in a placeholder. So they're able to submit that after the hearing. So at the LPC, bear in mind, you've got 70 people from all across the state. Immediate response starting out on this, well, the staff had contacted me the week before, not really understanding what is this, right? So I explained that to them, got it. So I mean, it's, yep, we get that, we understand now. So, but at the LPC level, it was very interesting that right out of the gate, some people stood, oh, there shouldn't be carbouts or special exemptions for anything. So I'm probably like the fourth people, person that they called on it. But let me tell you of the conflicts between the FAA standards versus what this carbout is asking for, the Endangers and Threatened Species Act. And I described all of the lepidoptera. Okay, mm-hmm, yeah. So there's so many acres that are dedicated to the preservation of lepidoptera that we can't touch brush on, or mowing schedules and all that sort of, that's crazy. Yes, yes, that's crazy. So that ended that dialogue. Everybody that had in the airport in their region as a representative there came right to the front and could tell a story about these conflicts. So especially Mayor, I think it's Harmon from Auburn.
I don't know who the mayor is.
Yeah, the mayor from Auburn who's on the LPC, he was very familiar. Somebody who was there spoke up about Freiberg, about the Freiberg situation and stuff. So after that, the whole room's like, oh, okay. You know, we spoke, some spoke too early. So they were very much, they got the conflict.
Yep, it's really a common sense.
The FAA standards had to prevail, so. When I told them of the insanity of the black racer snakes and when the solar project was going in and all of that that took place. So there, when you tour the solar project, there's trees out there that are lobbed off 15 feet in height to create a shaded transitional zone for the migrating black racer snakes as they go from one side of the airport to the other seasonally. It's not like the hundreds of acres of solar panels don't create a shaded transition for the snakes. Right? So the insanity of all of this. And if you've ever sat through a NERPA permit of that extent, when they're dealing with species of special concern and listening to IFNW, the dialogue that goes on around that and what the developer has to do to deal with that is just mind boggling. So we're not asking for exemptions for all of that. It's simply recognition that airports are an area of special concern themselves that by preserving or creating, we create these habitats for the airport's existence and then we have to preserve them and embellish them and then further encourage the wildlife to be there, which is in conflict with the FAA standards. But IF, but not DEP, IFNW wants the existence. So there's the rub. IFNW makes a recommendation to DEP. DEP is ultimately the one that adopts the standards, so. Anyway, so there was good support once it was explained fully. And I was very pleased to hear the recognition fall in the room for anybody that had an airport.
Yeah, that's why I think if it can get out of committee, it will pass.
Hopefully under the hammer instead of.
But it's in the Environmental National or Natural Resource Committee. So it's that type of audience that they're speaking to and they, we're talking about, we're in the sixth natural extinction event globally and so this is very important now. A lot of things along those lines when you're talking about the birds. Incidentally, the Maine Audubon got up and testified against it. And I pulled the Maine Audubon page on grasshopper sparrows, population estimated at 34 million. They're endangered in Maine. And we had to compensate at the solar farm $400,000 in luffie because once you get to the end of some of those conversations, you can do this, you can do that, you can mitigate, you can put holes in the fence for them to crawl through, or just cut us a check.
And they took that money and ran it up around the brownfield bog and bought some more bogland. Done.
Which somewhere else is fine, but on airports, it doesn't make sense.
Well, I hope it gets through.
Yeah.
In Maine is potentially an uphill battle a little bit, yeah.
You may find an opportunity that you may get invited back or somebody will get invited back to the work session potentially.
Yeah, they talked to me just before I walked in and it's next Wednesday.
Yeah, so if they allow you to be there for that, I would encourage it. Because they didn't get it in the room that I was in until, you know, till we explained it to them, Lucy, right? And then they're like, oh, that doesn't make any sense.
Yep. I think that from the testimony that I gave and was able to get them to start asking me questions, that I don't think they knew the conflict. And I don't think they knew the extent that IFNW is making airports go to. They didn't know about the in-luffies. They didn't know about the varying ratios of compensation, any of that type of stuff. So you could see some of them saying, huh, that doesn't really make sense, so hopefully.
I think, I think you need to, even though it says it in the title and such, you need to impress upon them, it's not about the stormwater management and runoff and all of those kind of deals. It's about the conflicts of creating or preserving wildlife habitat that's in conflict with FAA standards for the airport itself.
Mm-hmm. Yep, it's a safety thing.
Okay, could I have a motion on adopting the resolution? Yes, Mr. Martel?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Could I have a second, Mr. Tranchmontag?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further questions for Allison on this one? No? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, Allison, you ready to make us all like interested and excited? Okay, so 25 dash 45 dash 01, we're reviewing the airport layout plan and master plan narrative. Let us know what she's been up to.
The airport layout plan update.
You have postcards. Do people send postcards?
I like postcards. I'm old fashioned. All right, so to take us back, the business plan goals, we don't do anything if it's not in line with the approved business plan. So we wrote the first business plan in 2016. I updated it for us again in 2021. We've got two goals, very simple. The first is maintain a high level of safety, security and maintenance. Set the standard for that. The second is to reach, maintain and foster financial self-sufficiency. Each one of those, when you look at the business plan, have objectives below it. And one of the objectives is to actually do the master plan updates when we need to. So the financial self-sufficiency, we're working on it, it's going pretty well. This chart shows the expense versus revenue. Neither is what you would call fully burdened. The costs don't include CIP, local match, employee benefits, legal costs or insurance. And the revenues don't include taxes on buildings, business property taxes, special revenues like the Kenny Monk Wells Water District, TIF revenues or grant revenue. So this is really just a very basic snapshot measurement of as far back as I could find, year over year. So you can see we're very flat, except a couple little spikes probably for buying equipment. And then it started to go up there when you hired me. And then I was able to catch it back up again there. So we're doing, we're doing really well with the financial self-sufficiency, that business plan. And sticking to that is really guiding us on all of those things. So we feel really good about that part of it. The, one of the objectives, as I mentioned, was updating the master plan for orderly development. It became really apparent to us that just like when I started in 2015 and I looked at the old master plan, that this airport is just really developing at a pretty good pace and even more lately. So the plan that should last 10 years, we really needed to start updating it a couple of years ago. So we got going on it, we got that grant. And these are the areas that we really focused on. So we looked at the, we call it the terminal area plan. So that's over on the east side of the airport, what you're looking at right there where 109 goes by. And that was looking at the gates, how vehicles circulate around there, whether with the more and more congestion, if it's going to be safe. The landside parking lots, because those aren't adequate anymore. Utilities, fuel deliveries and possibly alternative energy for things like electric airplane charging stations, things of that nature. We looked at the west side and that's build out of larger box hangars, T-hangers, all those different types of things along Presidential Lane. And then what I've been affectionately calling the far east, which is across from Walmart and Lowe's and what the highest and best use of that parcel might be. De-icing capability and a large clear span hangar. So one of the things that we don't have at Sanford is anywhere to put a jet inside. So that's a major lacking point for an airport with our size of infrastructure. So we get all the jet traffic, but all winter, we don't really have any because they really need to go inside. If it gets too cold or there's weather coming in, even frost on the wings makes it so that you can't fly. So no de-icing capability and no large clear span hangar are two challenges that we have as far as that. So what is an airport master plan? It's a study, it's a planning study. We look at short, medium and long term goals, so five, 10 and 20 years. And we do tons of pre-planning, a bunch of public involvement, both just general public, the airport advisory committee is involved. I did a bunch of tenant workshops too to say, what would you guys see? What do you notice with circulation? All those types of things, we could get as much as feedback as possible. McFarland Johnson interviewed a bunch of the businesses on the airport. I think actually they might have interviewed all of them to see what they thought about things. We look at the forecasts. FAA has to approve the forecast, which was actually very difficult for us and took almost eight months because our forecast is way beyond what the national forecast is as far as growth. Then we looked at facility requirements and then we got into the fun stuff, which is the alternatives and the proposed development of, well, what if you put a building here and you oriented it this way and you built this infrastructure to go around it? What would that look like? What would the impact be? And then the result is the airport layout plan and all the things that go along with it. So just as an example, that piece that shows the green right there, when we started doing the plan, that was one of the concepts. And by the time we were done with the plan, Jim Knowles had already built that building. So it's in the plan shown as one that would be built, but it already exists out there now. So some of the things that we come up with are, for instance, the taxiway that's shown, that's kind of parallel to runway 14 there. So this is on the west side when you're coming in on Gatehouse Road, those T-hangers that are all in a row right there. And one thing that we have is a lack of overflow parking. So when that ramp is really full, when you drive by on the weekend in the summer, we're having to put jets way out in the Willywags and then drive the passengers back and forth. So if we could build a little bit of an extra apron there, that would give us overflow parking capability. So that's shown for a future project. We would also do that taxiway at that time because you can imagine having, there's what, 48, 58 units right there? And then they're all using that one little taxiway that exists right now. It could be an opportunity for congestion at that point. So that would give kind of a circular route to the entire thing. So that's an example of one of the, one of the projects that we looked at and we'll talk about more. So the report that's attached in here, it's the draft report, not quite finalized. It has the inventory, forecast, facility requirements. If you're going to read just one part of it, read the alternatives. And then just look, you can look at the pictures and it'll show, you know, alternative one, alternative two, and then just kind of skip to the end and it says preferred alternative and it'll explain why we picked the one that we picked. So if you want, that's like cheat code spark notes, if you don't want to read all 44 pages of it. But it goes right through the scientific methodology, how we came up with picking all of that stuff, looking at different forecasts, choosing if we think it's going to be low, mid or high, and then how those numbers actually figure out by square footage of ramp space that we need, by square footage of hangar space that we need, and then where all of those go by type and all that kind of stuff. So all that detail's in there. Then we have the plan set, which is the exciting part to look at. I gave you printed out versions because this is kind of tough to look at on the screen. And sometimes it's nicer to just hold it in your hands. But this is basically our new ultimate airport layout plan. So to call you back to the procurement process, this is one of those steps that to get a grant, it would need to be shown on here first. So there's a block on the big plan that shows a space for FAA to sign, a space for DOT to sign, and then a space for the city to sign, once we finally approve it. So the way this is all laid out here is that it shows short, medium and long term. The short is the lighter green and the lighter green, well, darker lighter green are buildings. The lighter green is pavement. And then you have the orange, which is the midterm, and then the purple, which is the long term. So a lot of the purple ones, we, and everything on the far east side there across from Walmart and Lowe's, we didn't show that on the master plan I did in 2015 because I just didn't conceptualize that we would build so many hangars so quickly. So we already had to start looking outside our normal area to figure out where we were going to put these. So you can see there's a couple hangars shown on the south side there for using that EDA apron. It's possible that we could get the helicopter school to move over there. That would be a great place for them. Think of it sort of the same way as city zoning, you want like types of activity with like types. There was a major problem, for instance, when Lifelight was at the airport but hadn't built their new hangar yet and they were over intermixed with all the smaller aircraft that, you know, they like to put their hangar door up and sit on the couch and kind of watch landings on the weekend and they just get absolutely sand blasted by Lifelight coming and going right next door with this giant, you know, jet turbine helicopter. So that's not a good mix. So we want to try to keep everybody with the same similar kinds. So for instance, along Presidential Lane, let me see if I have any zoomed in ones. Okay, we can talk about this and then we'll go on the west side. So this is the vehicle flow that we looked at. And we identified different types of traffic and where they go. So of course, it's an issue when you have vehicles that are going, the green and the purple across the active aircraft apron. Because you have passengers walking back and forth, you have that pedestrian traffic that's not really looking out for vehicles. And you also have people taxiing airplanes that can't see hardly anything when they're taxiing on the ground and they're not looking out for vehicles either. So we want to try to minimize that amount of traffic as possible. The green is actually the fuel truck deliveries. So those are like, you know, 12,000 gallon fuel truck that's coming in. That one's gate four, that's in between where the pavilion of the cafe is and that next hangar. It can't fit through gate three, which is near the South Sanford Fire Station because of the turning radius. It's too tight. So they actually have to go and drive right by the pavilion. So if they've got people eating out there and things like that or walking back and forth to their cars, there's this giant fuel truck that's driving by them. So one of the ideas was to separate that traffic as much as we can. And then to just reduce the amount and maybe even eliminate that gate. So I don't think I put that one in there. So when you look on the ultimate plan, you'll see on the other side of the fuel farms, we're proposing a new gate, moving gate five and having a motorized gate that only the fuel truck uses. And that way they won't drive across the ramp at all anymore and it'll separate them from driving through the parking lot for 199 Airport Road. And then that would eliminate the need for gate four. We could close that off completely. That could possibly give the cafe a little more area right there. And then we could have everything rerouted through gate three as far as traffic of people who need to get to and from their hangars. We looked at a couple of different development areas. So these are some opportunities in the future. Development Area 1, that is one of the oldest hangars. It's a wooden frame hangar. It's built below grade, so it floods on a routine basis. And that lease has expired. The person who holds the lease actually. The person who holds the lease actually inherited it from somebody, so they kind of have no sweat on it, so to speak. So that's on a year-to-year basis and I've just been communicating with him that, you know, as long as you want to run it, you can. But at some point, we're looking at that whole corner could be available for development because that, that hangar's pretty darn close to the end of its useful life.
I'm noticing you're looking at the fire station going...
Correct. Yep. So the fire station is another redevelopment area. That's another building that's past its useful life and has had its share of issues. So very good timing synced up with the new fire station being constructed. They can move everything out of there and revert that back and we can demolish it and then that'll be a nice area to reimagine completely if you wanted to. You could dream of rerouting Airport Road to line up with Eagle Drive and then I wouldn't have to risk my life every day turning left right there across those lanes of traffic. Or it could be a really good, just redevelopment area on the end of that ramp. One of the most valuable pieces of property on the airport is airside/landside access with the fence. Because you have the landside where the public can come up, customers, and then you can also have airside access. So that's commercial use for aviation. If you have a flight school or anything like that, even aircraft charters, anything where the public would have to drive up, you wouldn't want the public getting in through the gate and then roaming around the airport with no direction of where to go. You really want to keep that inside and outside the fence. So those are our valuable chunks of property there, where they're along the fence. Development Area Three that we looked at is across from Walmart and Lowe's, those two parcels. So we're still in talks about possibly acquiring one of those. It looks like one might be potentially under contract. But we did alternatives for having both or having one or either. So we can kind of shift it back or forth to see, to see if that works right there. And then we have a project coming up that we'll be bringing to you where we could possibly get some funding by selling other airport land and using that, those proceeds to buy that property. I have applied for a grant for that three, three or four times, but it's not competitive because it's not a shovel-ready project and it's a whole nationwide program. So that one hasn't competed very well, but maybe we can see what happens with that. So those are some of those development areas. So wanted to show you that so you could get your bearings with the satellite image underneath of it. And then this is what the plan looks like. So you can see that... You can see the, the road here. That's what I was talking about, the new gate five. And we have plans that show the turning radius of the fuel truck come in and fuel up at these two fuel farms here. And then they could go right back out onto Airport Road and not have to interfere with anything else. We also show the parking lot being expanded in a couple of different areas. So you could phase that if you really wanted to, just to add some additional parking for the cafe and for Southern Main Aviation. The maybe redevelopment of this corner, what that could look like. We just showed a placeholder building sitting there. And then we added all these little green parts. This one, we actually just signed a new lease agreement that that will be new construction that will be built this year. And then the owner over on the end, right here, he's going to build an extension, add another door to his hangar. So that could be possibly in this year as well, maybe the year after. And then we show another aviation apron over on this side and those large clear span hangars. So the idea is that this would be another fixed-based operator apron that would have de-icing capability built into the pavement. And there would be an airport entrance road that came in here. I show a road that would be for the tenant access along the back inside the fence. And then I also wanted them to show a road potentially for development on the outside of the fence if the developers of this property were open to it and maybe developing those parcels at some point as well. So I just wanted to show that on the plan so that people could get an idea of the connectivity of all of it and how it could all feed in into, to each other. So you can see the way we showed this with the parking lot. You could just move this over into the middle lot if you wanted to. And the hangar wouldn't necessarily have to be right there. But there's another one of those airside/landside opportunities and that would be where that, the terminal building for the airport would be. So that would be a public building, open for pilots to use anytime. The building that we've always called the terminal isn't technically a terminal building because there's no public space in it. So there's no public restrooms for pilots to use. Usually there's vending machines and lounge, a computer so they can check the weather and file their flight plans, but we don't have that. So once Southern Main closes at 5 o'clock in the afternoon and you get there, you're out of luck. You're outside. So this would be where we would maybe attach a little terminal building to a large clear span hangar and that would be a public-private partnership with somebody managing that.
What are your options for getting, I mean sewer is an important part of this side of the airport. Would you have to purchase the land across from Walmart? Or are there other options? Because I mean, all this development sewer would only benefit.
Yeah, we'll have, we would have to do a pretty comprehensive project. I know water stubbed out across the road to Marcel Payer's lot there.
Yep.
But I don't think sewer is. And then we have, we have a plan because the city does actually own and it's not encumbered by all of the airport regulations and obligations. So the piece that's on the other side of the church, the town owns that piece. I think it was a tax-acquired property. And where you could tie into the sewer, from talking to Andre, is pretty much right there. So if we were ever going to sell that property, we'd want to retain an easement and we could pull in sewer. We could give all of those little green guys there the option for tying in. And I think that would make those lots a lot more marketable too, to be able to do that. And that's all within the airport Tiff district. So we could use Tiff funding to do an infrastructure project like that.
Yeah, there's, there's a pump station there by gate, gate one and two that you're showing. There's a pump station right, right there across from Eagle Drive.
Yep.
That's where our fiber connection is as well.
So that's what we're looking at for the east side. So some of the just regular run-of-the-mill smaller hangars and then some pretty big ideas for that property if we want to go to that next, that next level. So I apologize for all the different gray squares on this. When I converted it to a picture to be able to put it in, in the program, it did that to it. But this, this is the ultimate airport layout plan that we've come up with. So it shows, I wish that we had a more zoomed in picture of the west side. But, but it shows the flight school being built over on the west side at 12 Presidential Lane. So that's in the permitting process for this year. That's a 6,000 square foot flight school. They have over 200 students right now. So that's, that's doing really, really well. They take, they figured out how to take the GI bill for the flight lesson program and they got certified as a 141 flight school, which is a more of a regimented flight school. So like the college I went to was a 141 versus a part 61, which is just anybody with their instructor rating could just give you. It's much less. You don't have to have a syllabus or anything like that. So it's a much more structured, structured higher-end flight school. And then two eight-unit hangars adjacent to that that are going to support just the flight school airplanes. He ordered four more airplanes that are supposed to arrive in 2026. So I think that'll bring their fleet up to 12 airplanes that are just dedicated to the flight school there. And then there's another private developer who is doing phase one of four additional buildings. So these are those parallel green ones on the west side that are all stacked in right there. So those would require, once he does phase two, which he has to go through DEP permitting for, those would require another access to Gatehouse Road. So a curb cut over there. So we're working on that. And then we just keep on going down Presidential Lane. So Presidential Lane's one of the ones where if somebody showed up and they wanted to build like a 50 by 60, just small private hangar, then we would encourage them to go on the east side and I wouldn't allow them to build it on Presidential Lane side. The big, the bigger corporate type hangars are meant for that side of it. So that's keeping like with like and that's the big taxiway there where that type of development would be good. We showed hangars, just a placeholder, as if we would extend Gatehouse Road all the way almost to the approach of runway seven. So we showed some hangars down along there. Those have never been shown before. And then hangars around the EDA apron. You'll see a real funny looking thing over on the east side. If you go towards like the back of where the sewing shop is.
Cul-de-sac.
Yeah, kind of looks like a little cul-de-sac. That would be the new compass rows. So when we were trying to site the compass rows, it's actually pretty difficult on the airport with all the development to find somewhere that meets the criteria. It has to be 500 feet away from anything else to not have any interference. When they pull onto the compass rows, they straighten up their nose wheel with north and then they calibrate their onboard equipment. So with all the maintenance that they do, they have to do that every time. They redo the engine and calibrate everything. And then pilots will often use it before they take off on a long flight, just to make sure that everything's all set up. So that's one of those projects that's probably, you know, 10 or 15 years out, but we just wanted to show it on there in case grant funding came available. We already figured out where it would go. That would let them pull off and get out of the way if they were using it and then the aircraft can still taxi by. So that's what's shown on there. That large purple area, it's got an irregular shape to it, the rounded part, because that's one of IF&amp;W's conservation easements that they have on the airport for the moth and the scrub oak. And that's where the shooting ranges are right now. So that's the land I was talking about to release for non-aeronautical sale and then using the proceeds from the sale of that land to set aside for a possible land purchase at some point, should the city decide that they want to do that. So that's, that's shown on the plan so that it's that preliminary check mark for FAA to approve it. And then the blue that we show are conservation easements, not conservation. I've got conservation on the brain. Those are navigation easements. So there, there's an easement over those properties that say you are right next to an airport. You can expect that airplanes are going to be flying over your house. There's noise. There might be pollution. There might be all sorts of things that are associated with airplanes flying over your house. So those are shown on the plan as well. So that in a very quick nutshell is the work that we've been doing over the last year or so. And this is, as I said, it's just the hangar portion of it. Then this next one that we're getting, working on getting a grant for is going to look at all the pavement and all the approaches to the runways. The Exhibit A is the airport's official property map. So you'll hear Steve and I refer to this on a regular basis. And if you get into that table, it's actually pretty interesting. It goes all the way back to when the federal government gave it after the war to the town. And it has the book and page number and the dates and every single piece of property that's part of the airport, you can go and find the deed for it. So this is the official legal map of the airport property and its boundaries and where every single piece came from. It also shows all of the types of, of use. So any of those non-aeronautical releases that I've done show on there, like for the solar project. And then I put a placeholder on there for future non-aeronautical. I believe it calls out the fire station and then it also calls out the shooting range to be sold. That's the Exhibit A. The schedule that we're working on, I did a presentation very similar to this for the planning board a week or two ago. Time's going by strange. And March 5th, we're targeting to take the final back to the planning board for approval. And then Aaron's also working on doing some zoning ordinances for the airport zone. Because once they dug into them and they started really enforcing them right to a T of how they're written, it, it doesn't work very well for development. So we talked it through with the planning board and came up with a bunch of recommendations of how we could make it a little bit more smooth for people that want to do development on the airport. As far as what, what would constitute going all the way to the planning board? What could just be a site plan review? How many abutters do they need to send notices to? All of those different kinds of, of things. So all of those ordinances, we're targeting March 18th for the council to approve the ordinances and then also to adopt the final version of this plan so that we can then start, start doing some of these developments. And we go to phase two and we do it again, but then that one won't be as interesting. That one's just all pavement widths and 90-degree angles of taxiways hitting runways and things like that.
Wow. Wasn't this interesting? Do you guys have any, any questions for Allison? Now's the time. It's basically her night at the podium.
I found this neat one in the closet. It's the master plan from 1976.
Oh, wow.
So I found a similar angle picture from just a couple of years ago.
Oh, wow. 1976. Jeez.
That wasn't that long ago. The tower that used to be there. It was like last week.
Interesting. Okay. You guys don't have any questions? I have a quick question. So as you're talking, at least on the west side, a lot of the green stuff is already proposed to be built and in process.
Oh, yeah.
How quickly on that side of the airport do you anticipate the purple to really, it sounds like it's going to go fast.
It might be more short-term than long-term.
Yeah.
It could stop at any time. You know what I mean? I'm not sure when we're going to hit saturation. Because we had, we've had over 60 people on the waiting list for a very long time. It's down to 38 now. So we're slowly kind of chipping away at it.
Gotcha.
But a lot of the airports, especially to our south, there's just so much money. It's $4,000 a month hangar space. And so it's just slowly pushing the smaller aircraft out. And it's getting more and more congested. So it's just one of those natural things where we're just the desired alternative.
Okay.
Yep.
So, so I was looking at the, the layout plan and trying to, I'm observing the difference between the short-term and the long-term, the green versus, versus the purple. Is there any, is there any advantages to us applying for future funding with the FAA if there's more green on there than purple? I guess I'll say it that way.
For what type of project?
Well, for, when you're showing the hangar development and such and to that, and the need to, to support that infrastructure. So, you know, I can, I think that there's good logic as to where the green is and where the purple is as far as later phases and such and to that. But I just was asking the question, if it's, if it's all green, do we, do we rise to more of a priority?
Oh, I see what you're saying. No, not really. It's, it's frustrating because the entitlement funding is fixed. So it's $150,000 a year and you can only roll up to $600,000 and that's it. And then you compete for discretionary against all the other airports in the region. And they only have, you know, a limited pot of money. But there's never been a time where I was more hopeful that that could maybe change than right now. So it's been that same way the entire time I've been an airport manager. Same amount of money. It's never changed. It's never gone up or down. The local share went from 2.5% to 5% and now it's 2.5%, but besides that, it's never changed. So maybe they'll look into it and see if they want to maybe reallocate how that funding works. I've tried to work with Maine DOT to have it more of a competitive base for DOT's money in Maine at least. So sort of like what we did with Taxiway Charlie, where I was able to get a lot more than their 5% share from them by proving that they get a lot of their funding from Sanford's fuel sales. And that was able to convince them to do that. And I was really hopeful that that might get somewhere at the beginning, but I'm not very hopeful about it now. So a lot of times what ends up happening is they think the airports that are the opposite of Sanford need the money more and we don't. And I try to tell them that it's an investment and the more you put into Sanford, the more it will generate and give back. So it worked with Taxiway Charlie, but I'm not sure that it'll work with anything else.
So no movement on the capped amount of 150 per year because that's, it's peanuts, right?
You can't do anything with it anymore.
And then I get frustrated that we can only save it for four years because the 600 doesn't do much of anything either. And then you got to swap it off and lend it out to somebody else and then pull it back and it's just, yeah. It seems like there ought to be some modernization. A, the annual amount should, should be increased and then you should be allowed to save that. And push that out to a million or something of that nature, so.
Yep. I probably will be working on updating the business plan at some point. So I think maybe the timing with the second master plan coming to an end will be a good time because that should be every three to five years and we're right there. So the business plan will need to get updated and tweaked a little bit. So I'll bring that before you at some point as well.
Pete's enjoying your company. He thinks he's going to like that.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking forward to that one.
Yeah, there's never a dull moment down at the airport. Plenty of characters.
Yeah, it's excellent. Excellent.
If you can get that de-icing, I'll bring my, my jet that's on floats. I'll bring it to the airport.
Perfect.
Store it in that hangar that's below grade, the amphibious part. It would just be perfect.
We went and landed in the carbon Cubs on Frozen Lakes at the end of last week. That was pretty cool.
Yeah, jealous.
That was really cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's really quite deep now.
Yep.
The ice. Yeah, it's really nice. Okay. That's it for this evening. We don't even have to take any vote. Just get this update. Any council member? Any council member comments this evening? No? Becky's going to be so jealous that we got this meeting done so quickly.
The quickest meeting in...
I know. Future agenda items? Yes?
Not so much a future agenda item, just as a reminder to the council and just for the public to know, I'm, I'm going to be out of state on the 18th, so I will not be here for the next meeting. I'm here for the, but, yep, the 18th.
Okay. Everybody's taking their winter, like, go somewhere warm, I get it. So next week are subcommittees. So don't forget, next week, subcommittees, the agendas will be out by Fri-, sometime Friday. And, yeah, so it's a busy week next week. The second week of the month is always the busiest, so. Do we have a meeting? Yep. Do we have any sort of a meeting next Tuesday evening?
Yep.
Yes?
Tuesday and Wednesday.
Tuesday night and Wednesday night?
Yep, the department meetings on the budget.
Okay. So next Tuesday and Wednesday evening, starting at 5?